It's 4:04 PM. This is an open session meeting. The subject matter of the meeting is the chancellor search and we'll be having presentations from search firms. And our illustrious Jeff Hayman will handle the introductions. We should begin with the pledge of allegiance since it's a regular meeting.
Members of the board and members of the public, I'm Jeff Hayman, Executive Director for Public Information here at the Peralta Colleges. And it's my pleasure to introduce the three potential search firms for the chancellor search that we'll be talking with tonight. They each have 20 minutes to make their presentation and then the board will be making the decision. So first up is Community College Search Services of Ventura, California, and their experience in recruiting for executive-level community college positions. We have Frances White, who's a search consultant, and John Romo, who is also a search consultant. So with that, you're on, you have 20 minutes.
Thank you, Jeff, and thank you, Board of Trustees, for this opportunity this evening. I am Fran White, and I am with the Community College Search Services firm, and my colleague here is John Romo, also with Community College Search Services. Our firm has been in existence since 1995 and have completed over 150 full and partial searches. The company is financially secure, it carries its own liability insurance. We have nine consultants on staff, a database of 1,000 names, a computer specialist, and four reference consultants. The search consultants are all former community college presidents and chancellors. We think about what distinguishes us as a search firm, and there are some distinctive features. First of all, we are flexible. Any portion of the proposal that you received can be modified. We respond immediately to requests, we respond immediately to any emergency. We are a team of nine consultants working together during all phases of the search process, particularly the recruitment phase of the search. We communicate with our client throughout the search process. We recruit nationwide and obviously statewide. We are available to provide any advice on search-related issues during the search process, including protocols for interviews, or protocols for forums, or assisting in developing and structuring site visits, should the board choose to do a site visit. One of our other distinguishing features is our role in terms of providing applicant diversity. John, you want to talk a little bit about that?
Sure, thank you. Excuse me, can you hear me okay there? Okay, thank you. As Fran mentioned, we are committed in working with any district, any district with which we work, to really provide the ongoing communication and to really focus on the culture, the district's culture, and to really emphasize throughout this process that this is your search. We are here to provide technical and professional expertise, and with that you will receive the full engagement. Fran and I will be your primary consultants, but we have Jim Walker, who is one of the owners of the company, who will be working with us, plus the other six consultants will all be engaged with us on an ongoing basis. On the specific issue of diversity, I think you can check with our references that we've included in the proposal. I feel that we are extremely, we are absolutely committed to providing you the most diverse, high-quality pool possible. And I think our track record, if you really check with our references and look at some of our placements in the past, our real reputation is reinforced by our results. Just as an example, in the last three years, I've been involved in five full searches with multi-college districts and single-campus districts, and out of those five searches, four of our placements have been women, males, and people of color. And just that, in terms of my own personal experience, and our ability to really bring in quality people in the candidate pool, and then have true diversity represented in the pool as well.
In addition to what John has indicated, a number of us, and you've seen this in the resumes that were provided in your proposals, have long ties and a network of community college colleagues nationwide and statewide. Many of us have served on national boards and commissions, we've served on statewide boards and commissions, some of us have held significant leadership positions in these national organizations. So we have a network available to us to call upon as it relates to finding the diversity we need, both in terms of Hispanic and African-American and other nationalities and ethnicities. So we are really proud of our applicant diversity. The Peralta Community College Board has a board policy, obviously, on chancellor search, and we would be obliged, should we be named to do the search, to follow that board policy to the letter. But we want you to know, as we said earlier, that we are flexible and available to meet. If the board needs to meet with us, or be provided with an update on the progress of the search, or what have you, this is something that we are able to do and would be happy to do such. We obviously, during the course of the process, will meet frequently with the selection committee. There's already a calendar and timeline established. We would adhere aggressively to that timeline and work with the selection committee to update your position announcement and establish questions, interview questions, and other protocols related to the interview process. All nine consultants will be involved in the recruitment process. This, we find, a critical use of our firm's time and efforts in assisting in these searches. Currently, we are involved in three searches, two chancellor searches and one superintendent-president search. I think we mentioned that also in the proposal. So we also will have a pool of people we can draw upon and draw from, if you will, to add to our recruitment list of possible names of individuals for candidates. Also, in the proposal, we talk about the preparation of comprehensive reference reports. We have four reference consultants who structure and develop those reports. We contact references on and off the list, we talk to former, current and former supervisors of individuals. We find this to be a nice cross-section and cross-way of ensuring that we're getting all the information we need regarding any given finalist. We want to inform the board about this, the board does receive the confidential comprehensive reference report, no one else gets to see that except the board members. And we'll be able to talk to you about what's in the report and answer your questions related to information in the report. We also do internet search, we do civil and criminal inquiries regarding individuals. The last thing we need is for a process to get to the finalist stage, and then there's a oops involved because some matter, background check, was not covered. So we are, we want to do due diligence, and we do due diligence in terms of reference reporting and background checks. Do you want to add anything to that?
Yeah, just add a couple things. I'd like to just add a couple things on the recruitment points that have been brought up, excuse me, Fran brought up. I wanted to also mention, be sure that it was referenced in the proposal, that we, one of our consultants is based in the Midwest, and is Dr. David Ponitz, who has a national reputation. And he is our expert in really our recruitment efforts outside of the state of California. As Fran mentioned, we, all being former CEOs, having been involved in various leadership positions, system-wide and nationally, we do have a lot of personal contacts, we have a multi-thousand database of several thousand contacts that we utilize. We have a commitment, and I mean this very seriously, to put the time in, to make the calls to the people that are referred to us, to the people that we identify, to talk to them about the district, to talk to them about this opportunity, and to really engage with them on a personal level. It's a very time-consuming process, but I believe it's really one of the most effective ways to really attract that high-level quality of candidate that you should have for this position. On the background checks, I do want to emphasize, we are very careful with background checks. We make, every finalist will be required to sign a waiver, acknowledging that we can go beyond the references that they provided the district in their application. We check, we talk to people outside. If you want us to make sure that we talk to certain types of folks at the campus level, we will do that. Also, on the internet search, we kind of do that as a work throughout the process of trying to pick up information. We're very careful with internet information because we all know there's a lot of stuff out there that really shouldn't play at all. But we have had the experience of being, of identifying and picking up information that sometimes isn't as forthrightly presented in the applications, I'll put it that way. And that's been very important informations for boards to have in making this critical decision.
Thank you, John. We also will assist in any site visits that you choose to have, we can assist with contract negotiations if you deem that of help, we're able to do that. And finally, one of our most distinctive features is our guarantee. Our guarantee is that we will assist you, help you find a leader that you're looking for, that you want to hire, a chancellor, that's our guarantee. If for any reason something happens in the first round, sometimes candidates will take other jobs, and you're not able to hire the person you may have chosen, but we will come back and do the search at cost. So that's our guarantee that you will have a chancellor, because we have no failed searches. That's our guarantee. In our proposals, you have our consulting fee that we've offered, you have our references, you have our resumes, and at this time, we will pause, and if you have any questions of us, we're happy to answer.
We'll also take public comment, and we have a speaker card from Bob Grill. Trustee Nikki Gonzalez-Uin will be handling this part of the public comment portion of
So, Mr. Grill, why don't you go right ahead, why don't you?
I have a question.
How about that, Mike, there, does that work?
I don't know.
Is it live? Great, thanks, Bob.
No, not a problem. I just wanted to be clear, because I have a particular question I'd like to have asked of each firm, and if I have an opportunity to-
Why don't you go ahead and ask that question, and then we'll just have you come back and re-ask the question every time.
Okay, great. I put in a card for each firm, plus the discussion, but I didn't know how things were going to work today. Specifically, how many chancellors have you placed, and what percentage of those placements of chancellors stayed after their first contract? How many of them were offered a second term after they finished the initial contract? I think, first of all, I got to say, I know representatives of every one of the three firms, I think they're all really good. My concern is, almost anybody could come in here and say, "I'm going to do a really good job for you, and I got good people who are going to do everything you want." But here's a pragmatic value that I think would help in your consideration of who you want to hire. So that's my question.
Thank you.
How many of you placed as chancellors, and how many of those chancellors stayed for a second term?
Okay, so, we have 20 years of experience of doing searches, presidential searches and chancellor searches. We have completed over 100 president and chancellor searches. I don't have the exact number of who's still there. Over a 20-year period, I imagine some may have retired or went away. But it does give you a number to remember that we, this is our job, this is what we do, and we've done hundreds of them.
I would add to that as well, again, and I don't have any specific numbers beyond what Fran has already mentioned, but I do think it's really important that Fran mentioned that we will guarantee that you will hire a chancellor out of the process. And as she mentioned, if the process runs into problems, we will work with the board on revamping the process and continuing it. We also have had a few situations whereby the committees of either, or the board or the president in hiring, the chancellor in hiring a president, or the board in hiring a chancellor, just did not feel that the pool was the right, anyone in the pool was the right fit. We will go out and do that search again for expenses only. In addition to that, we have our one-year guarantee. If, during the first year, it doesn't work out, we will come back and do the search again at expenses only as well. So I think those are, I will say that I believe it is accurate, that we have had, at most in numbers, a handful of searches that had to go out and redo the search because the pool just wasn't the right fit for the district. And so we worked very hard-
My question was about the second contract, specifically, who's the supposed-
That, I apologize, yeah, I'm sorry, I just don't have that information.
And we'd have to do a lot of homework to get that information back to you, Bob. I don't know if the board would wish to have that information or not.
Yeah, thank you.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Trustee Galasa has a question.
Yes, I had a question, thank you, I apologize for coming late to the presentation. My question concerns pricing. You're considerably under the estimated costs of some of the other candidates. Can you explain that, or are you going to be unable to deliver all that the others are for their extended price?
The proposal, the price and the fee, trustee Galasa stands as it is for all the comprehensive services that are mentioned in the proposal. So the price is what it is, there's no discount on services, we will do the comprehensive services we listed in the proposal. So everything is included in that price.
Thank you.
I wanted to just also invite other members of the public, and particularly representatives of shared governance groups, to pose questions of the search firm while we're in this process.
The process was already started before you came in.
Yeah, so, that's fine. I invite you to put in cards, is what I guess I'm explicitly doing, thank you.
Okay. I'm sorry, can I add one more piece of information?
Yes, please.
I also did want to mention to you that we have been, we have received, and we have worked with, the information from the Aspen Institute on the Selection of Higher Education Community College, specifically executive leaders. We have worked with districts in incorporating some of the recommendations and the concepts from that set of high-quality information into the search process, as far as the brochure, what language goes into that, the interview questions, the process in general, the criteria, the rubrics used in evaluating candidates. So we are familiar with that process, it's a high-quality process, and we have experience in working with districts and implementing it. If the district so chooses, we will make the district aware of that information, if you haven't seen it, and then we'll work with you on incorporating whatever element of it you think would fit with the search here at Peralta.
Thank you, and before you leave the podium, I'd just like to be confirmed that all of the presenters will be staying until the end of the meeting, in the event that there are any more questions. Trustee Galasa has a question.
Excuse me, I'm not sure that you've seen our proposed timeline, which is a relatively short period of time. Can you work successfully, do you think, within that very tight-
Absolutely.
Okay.
I have one question, I have a question.
Trustee Riley, well, actually, I think, Nikki, you add your hand up first. Trustee Gonzalez-Uin, and then trustee Riley.
Thank you very much for your presentation, and I apologize for coming in late, and maybe you addressed this when you spoke. I know you talked about the value, the importance of individual outreach, and so part of that's a selling thing, part of that is looking at a particular district, making a fit. If you're making the case that this is the district that a candidate wants to come to, what would you be highlighting? How would you help people understand the value of coming here as chancellor?
Okay, so I'm going to take first crack, we're both going to respond to this. First of all, Peralta Community College District has four colleges located in the greater metropolitan Bay Area. Who doesn't want to live in the Bay Area? But specifically to the Peralta District, you have a number of programs, academic programs, if you will, and other training, educational training programs, that are very attractive to students who want to achieve educational goals. So people or individuals who are interested in serving in a leadership role in a highly diverse college district and community and region would find this a very attractive position to go for. You have a lot of things going for you, your colleges are fully accredited, you have parcel tax money that you have incorporated into your integrated planning and budget models, you have much happening here to be proud of, and I really, truly believe it will not be difficult to recruit candidates for this position.
Thank you, and trustee Riley, I'm sorry, one more question.
I can ask one question.
He's opted to ask that question later. Thank you very much for your presentation, and please stay until the end, in the event there are any more questions.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Madam President, and the board, as well as members of the public, our next, the next firm who will present tonight is the ELS Group of Monterey, California. They specialize in providing recruitment and placement services. From ELS is Edward Valou, as well as Sally Savage, and you have 20 minutes, all yours.
Members of the board, guests, faculty, staff members, we are very honored to be here today to present to you why we believe we probably would be the best candidate for the position that you're seeking. Before I begin my presentation, along with Sally Savage, she's also co-founder of the ELS Group, and we are both delighted to be here today. I begin my presentation with an understanding that I've been in the Alameda County for the last 40 years. So I don't come to the position just as a consultant. I come to the position and the request for this position as a member of the community, a member of the community who have relatives, friends, colleagues, who've been here and have gone through many of the storms and challenges of Peralta, which I've had an opportunity not only to be in the district as an administrator, CEO, and vice president for instruction, but also as a member, taxpayer member of the Alameda County, so as to support this district relative to its mission, vision, goals, and objectives. When we talk about what is it that you're looking for, and what is it that we're trying to achieve, at the end of the day, the board has the ultimate responsibility and authority to bring in an individual with the capability to lead this district, with the capability to be a member of this community, the capability of being a member of the larger community of the San Francisco Bay Area, so as to facilitate the teaching, learning process in the district, so that we can have an educated citizenry that makes a difference in our community, not just today, but for also tomorrow. In that context, then, who are we, the ELS Group? Well, we're a small organization, we've been in existence for approximately 10, perhaps 11 years. So our record is based on 10 years of service, and in the context of 10 years of service, we've never had a failed search. In the context of 10 years of service, we've only placed one chancellor, but it was an important chancellor into the San Francisco Bay Area, and that was the San Francisco City College. At that time of placement, turmoil, loss of accreditation, all of those things that could go into the disruption of a search was completely, completely neutralized in a collaborative, in a collaborative way, so as to achieve the mission of the district, which was the selection of a qualified candidate for the San Francisco City College. Who are we? We're a small institution, we're a small district, a small college, not a district, but a small, hmm, small company. We enjoy what we do, we have fun with what we do, we have fun with our clients, we have fun with bringing people together to make a difference in the selection process. Let's talk about who we are technically. Technically, we have some of the best and the brightest of CEOs throughout the country. We are positioned in all four corners of the country, which gives us the opportunity to reach out broadly to the CEOs, vice presidents for instruction, and community members in the search that we're going to, in the search that we hope to perform. We're not just on those four corners, but we have relationships with presidents, with deans, with directors, with chancellors. And we're always looking and asking the question, where's the next best fit? Where's the next best talent? So when we talk about connections, we've served on the American Association of Community College Board of Trustees, Board of Directors, we've served nationally, locally, we've been around, we have a reputation both individually and collectively, in terms of who we are and what we do. When we talk about technical, being technically qualified, we have, on this search, will be myself, Augur Gallegos, who is the former chancellor of the San Diego Community College District, we also have Jess Gaudio, all of those members have been here at one time or another, and six or seven other chancellors, presidents and superintendents, on this team. We don't engage in a lot of searches at the same time, and the reason for that is because we need to dedicate and focus our attention on the best possible strategies for the development and for the development, not only of the selection team in the process, but also making sure that the board gets what it wants. How do we do that? We do that in a 10-step process, and I would ask and call the board's attention to this 10-step process that you have in front of you. First one is the search process itself, where we engage vigorously in team building. It's very important, when faculty members come together, and administrators, and everyone else, it's very important that those groups coalesce around a single purpose, to support the Board of Trustees and their desire to have the best chancellor. In our search process, we make certain that that happens. The second thing is on the announcement and the document, you talk about the representation of the district. Let us be clear, the candidates are also evaluating you, as you are evaluating them. So it is part of our DNA to make certain that the district is held in the most favorable light. Yes, we talk about the educational programs that you have here, yes, we talk about the challenges that you have here, yes, we talk about the opportunities, because we want to make sure that the chancellor coming in knows both sides of the spectrum, so that they can deliver what you want, so that you can evaluate them accordingly, so you can measure their strength, you can measure their commitment. We ensure that, that's part of our DNA. The talent searches, I was talking about it, we spread out across the country, we're very well-known, we're respected, and yet, at the same time, we're small. The screening process- The screening process, very, 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 very focused. We spend a tremendous amount of time going over the candidates, looking at the candidates through the search process, communicating with the candidates, making so they feel good about their process, making sure they feel good about their experience. We want them connected to the district. We want them to, when they leave this district, even if they're not selected, they can say some positive things because of their experience that they had in the search process. We guarantee that. In the interview process, we work with the committee to make sure that the candidates that are, that have been selected have been well-vetted before the process. We sometime will say to people, we don't think this job is yours, we don't think that this is a good fit for you. Let us be honest. We're transparent in the process, because we would expect that the Board would want that of us. Relative to background checks, we have a private investigator on staff. That's all he does, to make sure that the reference check at every step, at every step, is evaluated fairly. We look at the social media to make sure that no hidden stories in there. But I ask this question, would you like to be evaluated just on the social media? Could we lose a good candidate just because of the social media? We want to make sure, and that's why we use a private investigator, to run out the details, to find out what it is. One of the things they think we do, and we do extremely well, and that is the self-assessment. You have candidates that come from all around the world, PhDs, master's degrees, 20 years of experience, 15 years of experience, but there's something that separates each one of those candidates. The way we find that out is through the use of an OPQ. What that simply says is that we want to know more than what's on the paper, we want to know more than what was just written. You need to know more than was just written. So we do an OPQ assessment that will give us information about how that person likes to work, what are their, what is that person's greatest strength, and it's known on a national sampling. In a final interview, we're involved in the process from beginning to end. All three of the candidates, all three of the people that you talk, that you see on our list will be involved every day in this process, in every way, to work with the Board, to help the Board to be successful in its selection. We're also available for negotiations, if that is the, if that is the interest of the Board. Finally, let me close by saying this. This job, for us, is just not a matter of consultancy. I said it in the beginning, and I'll say it again, we have the skills, we have the talent, and we have the commitment and the proficiency to find an outstanding chancellor for you, and we guarantee our work. But for us, it's more than just a consultant gig. It's a commitment to the Peralta Community College District that we too, at one time, had been a member of. With that, we close our presentation, and we answer any questions that you might have.
Maybe I can just pose the question for you, Bob? Does that work?
You want to?
All right, why don't you step on up to the microphone?
Push that rip up. Thank you.
I want to reiterate that I know representative from each of the three companies here, and they're all people that I know, that I like, and more importantly, they've all been successful administrators here. So the thing for me that would separate the companies is a simple question. How many chancellors have you placed, and how many of those chancellors made it to a second contract? There was a time when I was on the State Academic Senate Executive Committee. I mention that because I traveled all over the state. I saw almost every community college, and the ones that were most successful were the ones that had administrators that were there for the longest time. They weren't figuring out how to do stuff, they knew what they were doing, and they wanted to figure out how to do it better. And what I'm interested is a chancellor, not just for one contract, but somebody who will be here for a longer term, somebody who can turn our district into what I saw as the best in the state, because they were here for so long. So my question is, how many chancellors have you placed, and how many of them made it to a second contract?
I think as Dr. Villo indicated, we have only placed one chancellor, we've only had one, a contract for one chancellor. However, we've had about 24 administrators placed since 2009. Of every single one of those people, every one went into a second contract, and some are still there, they're there for many years. So, in all honesty, we've had, we have a really good track record with that. And not just that, we have never had a failed search, not in the, not in the beginning of the search, not in the pool, you know, the size of the pool, the acceptance of the pool, and we have never had a
No, for the city.
We've never had any, any, any aspect of the search fail.
Never happened, of course.
Oh, and, and I think that, I would say 90% of all the people that we placed were historically underrepresented cultures, and women.
Thank you. Are there any other questions? Any questions from the Board? Thank you very much.
Can I add one thing?
Yes.
Please.
No.
The OPQ that Dr. Villo indicated is a, is a, an occupational personality assessment. An individual takes, it takes about 45 minutes. Out of that, and it has been normed through, by the, the type of job the person is, is qualifying for, out of that, you will receive a 38-page, you, the Board only, receive a 38-page assessment of that person's fit for the college and for the job. And you'll say, well, how could that be? We did, we did, on two college presidents in Southern California, we did focus groups. We had each of the constituent groups of that college, we interviewed and did a focus group on each of those two college presidents. Out of that, we compiled a rather lengthy assessment of the individual, and then the individuals, two, two different presidents, took the OPQ, and it is utterly and completely remarkable how the psychologists that do the analysis on that pinned those personalities just as the focus groups had. It works. I mean, and it's not going to tell you who you should hire, but it does tell you who you shouldn't hire, you know? So, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Jeff, if we could, are you
Take a three-minute break.
Just a three-minute break. Okay.[1108.83]
We'll be starting in about 30 seconds. We're calling the meeting back to order now after a three-minute break. It's 4:46 PM.
Okay. Thank you, Madam President, members of the Board, members of the public. Our third and final search candidate this evening, search firm candidate, is the Association of Community College Trustees, commonly known as ACCT. They're Washington DC-based nonprofit educational organization that maintains a full-time team to assist with all aspects of the executive search process. Presenting on behalf of ACCT is Judy Walters, who is a search consultant. Judy, you have 20 minutes. And I'll dim the lights and give your presentation.
Thank you, Jeff. Good evening, Board members. It's been a while since I've been in Peralta, but it's nice to see so many faces. And we were sort of joking ahead of time about how each of the firms has somebody that has worked in Peralta, which is, I think, very good for the Board in whatever decision they make. The Association of California Community Colleges, you have a copy of the PowerPoint and the material that was placed next to your area there, but I will walk you through this. The executive search consultants for this particular search will be myself, Dr. Susan Cota, and Dr. Narcissa Polonio. ACCT possesses deep knowledge of California community college and districts. We understand the Brown Act and participatory governance in California. We maintain a nationwide network of community college leaders for outreach. We have a track record and commitment to recruiting a high-quality, diverse candidate pool. 60% of the candidates that we've placed are minorities or women. And to sort of get a jump on Bob's question, ACCT has been in existence since 1972. Consultants have extensive experience in Northern California, specifically in the Bay Area. We conduct all searches with respect to our core values, student success, community needs, integrity, transparency, openness, equity and fairness, respect, and superior quality. We're proud to be assisting currently the following institutions with their executive searches. Community College League of California in Sacramento will be the president and CEO. Foothill Deansa, Community College District Chancellor, which was just in the -- we're in the process. And then Contra Costa College in the Contra Costa District is one of the searches that we're doing. Completed within the last five years, within the last six months, Los Angeles Community College District Chancellor. Yuba College District Chancellor, that was about three years ago. Rio Honda College President, West Los Angeles College President, Hartnell College President, and the Reedley College State Center was just within the last year. And the Yuba College District Chancellor has rolled over his contract. Other searches for major metropolitan areas include the Baltimore City Community College. That has just been completed. Houston Community College in Texas, Pima, Tucson, Tacoma College in Tacoma, Washington, Delgado in Louisiana, Community College of Allegheny in Pittsburgh, Tulsa Community College in Tulsa, Hotos in New York, and the Bronx in New York. We do customized steps in a traditional ACCT search. We will follow the Board Policy 2431 on the search process in the selection committee development and facilitation, institutional analysis and profile development, in marketing and advertising strategy, recruitment of a diverse candidate pool, the candidate evaluation and screening, and the facilitation of the appointment. We work with the Board and we work with HR and IT through all the steps that we take so that it is a solid, connected-together search for you. As soon as possible after February 3rd tonight, we would meet with the Board to clarify processes and points in the timeline so that on February 11th, you've got a public forum for profile development that you want to have done. We can do, I say "we can do" because this depends upon your wishes, an electronic survey instrument for each college, for the district office, getting faculty, staff, students involved, and for the community. We have done this in the past and ask, it really helps with getting the information for the profile development to the widest, broadest community that you would possibly want. The target date for applications, as set by your proposed timeline, was April 3rd. Between the 5th and 8th and 15th of April, the process being facilitated by the ACCT search consultant, which would be me, would be the first selection committee meeting. We develop screening criteria, interview questions and formats, select the semifinalists to be interviewed, and we conduct preliminary reference reports on semifinalists. So those would be the people that would be interviewed at that first round by the committee. Then the selection committee works with the applications. We use an online portal at ACCT. Again, the applications can come in directly to ACCT, or they can come in to HR here in Peralta, whichever you decide you would like to have done. I would stress that confidentiality is extremely important in a search of this kind. We want people to feel like it's going to be confidential. Their reputations are going to be kept out of the public until they're a finalist and so that we get the broadest possible pool we can. Public forum with the finalists, we'd need to clarify with you whether you want a public forum at the district office, or do you want public forum at each colleges? And these are things that we would tease out with you on your timeline of the 17th. May 12th, you have is the Board interviewing finalists, and we would facilitate that process. 18th through the 22nd is the time that you set aside to visit the final candidate's institution. And then on June 9th, you would approve the next chancellor. And again, we would help facilitate negotiations and contract development, however much involved you would like to have us, should you do that. ACCT understands California's guidelines. You can't do more than a three-year contract, and also the buyout clauses. So we're very cognizant of the rules and regulations in Title V in the Ed Code. In terms of facilitating the selection committee's work, we help establish the screening criteria based upon what came out of the public forum and the direction the Board wants to go. Review applications, that's done online. Select the selection of the semifinalists, which would be that first round of people being interviewed. And then we would recommend five finalists to the Board per your policy 2431. The search process, institutional analysis and profile development, we help develop your profile and can implement, as I said, an online survey to reach faculty, staff, students, and the community. Again, we'd need to work out that with the Board, with HR, and with IT. Questions that may be useful to be considered in the profile, or what are the district's short- and long-term priorities? Some of these things can be teased out of your mission statements. What are the immediate internal challenges facing Peralta? What are the community expectations? And what are the emerging demands? Traditionally, for large systems, as I said, we do have an electronic system available, and that survey instrument would ask, what are the challenges and opportunities? What are the short-term and long-term priorities? And what are the ideal characteristics that would mark the Board? Again, we work closely with the Board, HR, and IT in putting together that kind of a survey. Questions that may be useful for you to consider are, what are you looking for in a chancellor? What qualifications does he or she need? An example is teaching experience. Do they need to have fundraising experience? What personal characteristics do you seek? What management style are you seeking? And that will be very important for Peralta. And what leadership qualities do you value? In the Board discussion, you will need to reach an agreement on what you want in a chancellor. That will be very important in terms of spreading out the search and contacting all the many people that we intend on doing so in terms of bringing you a good pool. We do one-on-one contact and personal outreach. We network with other California and out-of-state community colleges. If you can have some water. Sorry. ACCT appears. Thank you. ACCT appears and presents at national meetings. We'll be at the National Legislative Summit, February 9th through 12th. Some of you may be going to that. ACCT will also be at the Dream Conference in Baltimore. We'll be at the ACE, the American Council on Education, meeting March 14th through the 17th. This is all during the recruitment period that you have laid out in your timeline. And we'll be at the National Convention, April 18th through the 21st. We have a huge database. We have source letters to solicit applications and nominations. We accept individual nominations from people. And we assist with the development and placement of print advertisements, again, working with your HR people. And we assist in setting the stage to attract the very best candidates. Our process provides an opportunity to involve the greater community and to strengthen its bond to the district and the Board, the community's bond. The ACCT process fosters consensus and support of district goals. There is a distribution of regular progress reports from the Chair of the Board or the Chair of the Selection Committee, whichever you would choose to have send those out, to the district employees, students, and the external constituents. And you have 24/7 access to consultants by phone, email, or video conferencing. This is our assist search page, and I thank you very much for the opportunity to present this, and I'm happy to answer any questions you have. I did make some calls because I'm a new person with ACCT as a consultant. We average about 26 searches a year, and 75% of all the searches we've done since 1972, those people stayed for a second contract. And anything beyond that, I'd have to go back and ask some questions of the Office. We have a vast array of consultants that do our reference checking, both the semifinalists. We do reference checks on the semifinalists, which that information is given to the selection committee. And then we do very intensive reference checks on the five finalists that would be sent forward to the Board, and that information is shared with the Board at the appropriate time. And we have a number of full-time staff people that are in Washington DC. Myself, Dr. Cota, and Narcissa Polonio would be the team that would be working on this search. I see there was another name on the opening slide, and that's incorrect. It would just be Dr. Cota, myself, and Dr. Polonio. I'm happy to take any questions.
Mr. Grill, you want to pose your question again, or you feel sufficiently responded to?
At this point, when she said she was responding to my question in her speech, she told how long the company was in business. That wasn't it. But at the end, she actually did say 75% of the searches. What I realize now, and would have been a good thing to send out ahead of time as information, what we know is some -- well, the chancellor is always the chief executive officer, but sometimes a president, like a one college district, is the chief executive officer for the district. And sometimes, a president of a college is a junior member of the chancellor's staff. So it would have been better if I had worded my question, how many chief executive officers, not just presidents, but if there was a chancellor, then the chancellor; if there wasn't, then presidents, were placed, and how many of them made it to a second term? And they could have done the research, so they could have answered that specifically. But I think we got a feel, a good feel for each of the three at this point. So that last answer, I suppose the 75% is the answer you have for me, right?
That's the answer I have now. And I think I mentioned earlier that we do about 26 searches a year, ACCT does.
Do we have any questions from the Board? Trustee Gonzalez, you in?
Welcome back, President Walters. I'm going to ask the same question of you that I asked of the first team, and that is, if you were doing the hands-on recruitment, and you were trying to make the case that this was the place where somebody should spend the next five to 10 years, what would the case you would make? How would you pitch this district as the destination job?
Well, having worked in this district for eight years, five of those as the Vice Chancellor of Ed Services, and three of them as the president of Vista, which we changed to Berkeley City College, I think Oakland is a very exciting place to be. It is extremely diverse. The whole East Bay is diverse. There are a lot of wonderful things that are happening here. People are really working to work together. There are four very solid colleges. I think, as far as I know from the outside, there are sitting, very good sitting presidents at all four of those colleges. You have money that came from the bond. You're past any of the problems that you had with finances. My understanding is that there is a bill in the legislature that's going to change, hopefully, if it passes, the formula allocation on the initial foundation rollout, where, you know, if you're, you get three and a half million, you get five million, depending on, it doesn't matter what your FTES is. You can climb up those steps. If they do that, that's going to help colleges that are a little smaller, which would include, you know, a couple of the colleges within Peralta, because until you get to 10,000 FTES, you know, you're always looking for money. But I think the money situations have been handled. I think the accreditation issues that have been in the past have been handled. I think it's a prime district to be able to say to somebody, you can come and be here five years and continue on to what the next things are that the Board and the district made up of the faculty, staff, and students want to do.
I have a question. Dr. Walters, there are three existing executive searches that ACCT is doing in Northern California. How would you distinguish this Peralta chancellor search from the others? And how would the time be allocated if your company were selected as the search firm?
Well, the team that's doing those searches are not myself or Dr. Cota. Now, obviously, Dr. Polonio works a little bit with all of them, so, but neither, none of the people that are working on this team here are working on any of those three searches. In terms of the, they're asking for different kinds of people. You know, the CEO for the league is a different kind of person than a chancellor for a district. And I think that because there has been a change with Scott Lay leaving, that they're going to be looking for somebody who is going to go into the legislature, do some work with the legislature, but they also want that person to have closer contact with the trustee association and with the CEO Board. And I think there's just going to be, it's a different person than what you would want for chancellor of Peralta. Contra Costa College is going to be looking for somebody, probably a first time, that would be a first-time president at Contra Costa College. That's different than the, you know, person that you're going to have as a chancellor here. And who did I say the third one was?
Foothill Deansa.
Foothill Deansa. Yes. Well, Foothill Deansa is a very large district, and it has some different things that they're looking for than what you're going to be looking for here in Oakland. We have much more diversity in the East Bay. We have much more poverty levels from one end to the other than what you have over where Foothill Deansa is. I mean, they're good colleges, I'm not saying they're not, but it's just a whole different clientele, whole different people than what we have here in Oakland. We're a much more exciting place to be. We want people who really care about the community college mission and allowing people the opportunity to be able to break into college, first-time college-going students. And so I don't see that as being a conflict, you know, with people applying. There might be somebody who applies for both jobs, but I would be very surprised. Our targeting is going to be really into a diverse community. I've told you the areas that we meet on a national level and also on a state level, and we're really focused on that. And I have no idea what they're going to be looking in, you know, at Foothill. I'm not a part of that team.
Thank you. Trustee Gonzalez, you in, has a question?
I just will point out that you have two Board members who have a combined 50 or 60 years of experience in the Foothill Deansa district. So when you say, "This is a much more exciting place," I just beg to differ. Thank you.
Point taken, I understand.
But I will, being the other part of this extended experience couple here, say that it is a different place, too, which is what you've been stressing. Different clientele, high technology interests, et cetera, do give it a distinctive flavor. And of course, regardless of who we select, all of these searches are going on concurrently. So.
Thank you. Are there any other questions from the public? Thank you. We'll have a five-minute break, and then we'll begin the deliberations.
We'll have a five-minute break, and then we'll begin the deliberations.
Can you turn this down?
If we can convene, reconvene in about 30 seconds. Are we ready to reconvene? It is now 5:20, and we have agendized a meeting from 4:00 to 5:30. So we're reconvening the, reconvening the Peralta Community College District meeting of February 3rd. Do we have any remaining questions? Then we'll begin deliberation. Actually, we need a motion. Oh, we have a question.
You know I do. Thank you very much, Mr. Grill. Public comment cards, I've got one for Bob Grill.
Just one?
Just one. I've got four comment cards, they all say Bob Grill on them.
Well, I didn't know what your process was going to be, so I put one in for each of the individuals.
Thank you.
Yeah.
We appreciate that. We appreciate you putting in the.
I wanted to just cover all my bases. This is one of the most important decisions, picking a chancellor that you're going to make. And there's a few things that I just thought I'd throw out there, so in your deliberations, you'd think about this stuff. Nobody has mentioned the fact that although each of you individually will say it's not me, it's them, this is a very political board, and Peralta is a very political district. And hiring somebody who is going to either be a challenger to the board, a puppet of the board, independent, where that balance is and how that balance is going to be made, I think is important. And you're not there yet, but finding somebody who can get you the kind of person that can really stick around here for a long time is going to be hard. And we can point out the fact that, we'll take my college, for example, I don't think any of the administrators have been there for more than a year, a year and a half. We are a turnkey institution. We train people and they move on. People don't stick around here. We need to pick the firm that's going to be able to bring you the individual that's going to be able to stay here for a long time. I think that's going to be incredibly hard. But it's the kind of issue that I want it in your heads, if nobody else talks about that, that that's what I hope to get. I don't want somebody who agrees with me, I don't want somebody who's going to do what I say to do. I want somebody who knows how to be a chancellor. And, you know, there's a problem. I expect we're going to get somebody who's going to be promoted into being a chancellor. And they're going to have to learn the job. Well, we got schools where most of our administrators are learning how to do their job at the same time that they have to do it. And if we're going to turn that around, if we're going to make it a place where all our administrators want to stay for a long time, I think that should start at the top. And I think the most important thing that I can say to you is to think about the different firms and who is going to be able to provide you with a chancellor that actually has the potential of 10 years. Not that you can make a contract for 10 years or a promise of 10 years, but when somebody, all these companies are talking about their placements, and they're not talking about how long those placements stuck. That had to be brought out. That bothered me. I thought that would be important for them to want to present as how successful they were. Because I think it's not too hard, we're not as hard to find somebody for you.
You've got 10 seconds.
I'll finish up. It's not as hard to find somebody that will impress the board as it is to find somebody that'll stick around for a long time. And that's my most sincerest concern that you look at. I think all three of them, like I say, I know them, I like them, there's not a person up there that I don't have respect for, and I think you have a very hard choice, and I can't tell you pick one or another, except to tell you to pick the one that's going to get you the candidate that has the potential of being here for 10 years. Keep that in your minds, please.
Thanks very much.
Thank you very much.
We do have one other speaker card, and that's Matt Goldstein.
I just wanted to express some concern about the ambition that I see in this foreshortened timeline, and I've spoken with folks around the room about this over the last month or so. But again, we appear to be off-cycle, that is, we're not following the calendar that chancellor candidates typically follow. And it's been a part of recent Peralta history that we've tried to do this, and we failed. This was, I believe, three and a half, four years ago. So I fear that we're making the same mistake we made last time when we scrapped a search that we had initiated off-cycle. So I would just remind the board and the public of that recent historical fact. The other point I wanted to make is that with this ambitious timeline, assuming that we do elect to forge ahead despite recent history, it will be very difficult for faculty to participate fully, particularly towards the latter part of that search. We saw some of the projected timelines and campus visits, some of the crucial closing moments of the campaign would be happening virtually when finals are being given or when grades are being assigned. So to ensure maximal participation from the faculty, I would hope, again, that a timeline that would be open to full faculty participation would be adopted. So thanks very much.
Thank you very much. Are there any other comments? Any other speakers?
No other speaker cards. Thank you.
Vice Chancellor Largent, do you care to speak to the timeline and its feasibility?
Thank you, Trustee Brown. I think the timeline is a tight timeline, but as I said before, I believe it's doable. To respond to Matt's concern, again, the, there's a timeline in here that request appointments and then a commitment for appointments, and then it follows through. But once the committee is actually established, then the committee, they get together, they pull out their calendars, and they agree within the provisions of the timeline, the particular dates to make sure faculty, they're not teaching on that date, who's on the agenda, who's on the timeline, and make sure that everyone agrees to the dates that flow from the timeline. So while the timeline is tight, I believe it's a doable timeline. And I think we need to proceed with the timeline with some amendments to it when we decide, when the board decides on a search form, we want the search firm, and they've all received a copy of the proposed timeline, for the search firm then to work with the district to kind of flush out some of the operational issues with their timeline, to get us to where the board wants us to be, June 9th.
Mr. Goldstein.
Thanks. So if I may, Trudy, the other implication of my comment was about the candidates who would be searching during a more conventional search cycle. So I think tradition has it that the most interested parties start to check, say, the Chronicle of Higher Education in the fall. So again, one of my concerns is the candidates who'd be most suitable to this job are not necessarily going to be looking at the time that we're posting our announcements. So that's the other concern about the projected timeline that I wanted to hear addressed if possible. Thanks.
Thank you, Matt. While that's true, really districts conduct searches throughout the year. There used to be a prime time for candidates, if you will, but as you probably heard from the search consultants, there are active searches for chancellors and superintendent presidents as we speak. And so I don't foresee that as an issue. I think if there's a candidate who's interested, and we can pull from that, that they will apply and go through the process. So I don't think there's a prime time anymore for candidates, and, you know, there are a number of searches, and so I think we can be competitive with the timeline.
Thank you. Thank you, Vice Chancellor Largent, and thank you, Mr. Goldstein. So at this point, we need a motion to proceed with the deliberation. Do we have a motion from the board regarding the selection of any of the candidates that were presented before us? We need a motion to begin discussion. Do we have a motion from a board member?
Just a clarification. Should the motion be, the naming, excuse me, should the motion include a statement of the group that we're endorsing? Is that required at this point to debate? Or how do you do it so that we debate all three of these separately?
Let's do this. Let's make, let's have a motion to proceed with a decision or deliberation regarding selection of one of the three candidates presented. There are only three, so in the course of the discussion, we can discuss all three. But we do need a motion according to our protocol or Robert's Rules of Orders to begin the deliberation.
Okay. So I'll make that motion.
We have a motion from Trustee Galasa, and, which is seconded by Trustee Riley, to discuss selection of, or to select one of the three candidates that was proposed. So the floor is open for discussion. Do we have any comments by any of the board members regarding the selection, the search firms?
Well, since I made the motion, as soon as I get this fly, that.
We'll start with Trustee Galasa, and then Trustee Gonzalez Yuen.
I wanted to suggest that we, when we make a decision here, that we make a decision based on a firm that is well-established and has a good, solid track record, and that has reasonable cost projections. And as I look at the three candidates here, all of the candidates, I believe, have admirable qualities and the potential for bringing in a very good candidate. Just based on the track record of the community college search services and their 20-year success rate, I would propose that we give serious consideration to this group.
Thank you, Trustee Galasa. Trustee Gonzalez Yuen.
Thank you.
I think I concur with Trustee Galasa on those criteria. Now, just to add a couple other things. One is I think that whoever our consultant is has to be somebody who's going to work well in the shared governance process and understand that it may or may not work. I think, you know, we need to move forward with the expectation that we will be successful. And frankly, notwithstanding one of the speakers who said, you know, it's going to be a difficult search, et cetera, maybe, maybe not. I think the, what I'm looking for is a search group that is enthusiastic about this district. I think I'd be preaching to the choir if I sat here and talked to this board about why this is such a great district, or to the faculty and staff, because we are here and we understand what an amazing place this is, and I think we also understand that the potential of this place is always great. And that's kind of what we're looking for, is somebody who sees that potential and says, oh, yeah, that's the job I want, that's the challenge I want. So I'm actually optimistic about this. I've been optimistic about this district since I came onto the board and before. I think we also then need to recognize that if, in fact, it doesn't work, well, you know, we start over and we move it forward. If the timeline doesn't, in fact, work, the candidates aren't out there, all right, so be it, we'll figure that out. So having said that, I think, you know, I'm leaning towards the first group that presented here, the community college search service, services. Thank you.
I echo the comments of Trustee Gonzalez Yuen. Our job as trustees is to find the best, and also our comments from the public, from Mr. Grill. Our.
Mr. Grell, our job is to find the best candidate, or the best chancellor that we can. And if we look at the pool and we don't find that the talent that we believe is out there, then I think it's incumbent upon us to reconsider and to keep trying. I think that we're all have engaged in a lot of hard work and invested a lot of effort. And we understand that the process of working with people, working collaboratively, and working for excellence requires commitment and perseverance and struggle. So I appreciate the commitment that we have from our whole Peralta body, our faculty, our staff, our faculty senate, the shared governance process, and the students that we serve, the community that we serve. And I think that all the trustees here are committed to honoring that responsibility. So I think we'd like, I'd like to save my comments regarding the search firm until the last and facilitate, and continue to facilitate the conversation. Do we have any other comments from the board regarding the selections, the selection of a search firm?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. This is probably my fourth or fifth chancellor search, and we've been on timelines that have been extensive. We've been on short timelines. Looking at the timeline we currently have and working with our HR office, I think that we can complete this. We've had, in our, just on two weeks ago, when we were in Sacramento, this was announced that the chancellor was retiring. There's, there were some nice feelers out there. And I think that we're in an area that we can, that people will come to support us and work with us. So I feel very confident that we stick to this timeline. We have to be very disciplined and very patient. I think that we can make this happen. And so I'm comfortable with that, and I'm comfortable with the choices we'll make this evening.
Trustee Bonilla or Handy? Trustee Bonilla?
Thank you. I also, as a, as a new trustee, am obviously new to the process, but not new to the hiring process for a high-level seat like the chancellor that we're looking for here. And I also wanted to say that I really appreciate public comment from earlier today. I think the comments were important, the questions that you posed. I think that it may have set some of the responses in a, in a venue that was, or in light, that was not, let me just rephrase. So because we didn't pose these questions beforehand, I think that some of the presenters were maybe caught off-guard and weren't able to address some of the questions that were, that were posed. And so we probably should have had some way of getting these questions to them, either from the trustees or from the public in advance. But having said that, I think I definitely have a preference of leaning towards a, one of the, the presenters, because I felt comfortable, not only with the information that they provided, but they really set some tones about how they distinguish themselves from some of the other firms. So again, I think the Community College Search Services is definitely someone who I would be in favor of supporting.
Do we have any other comment from the board? Trustee Handy?
Yes, I think when I was elected to the board, we immediately went into a chancellor search. And, and then again, there's two that I've been involved in. And I think we've learned a lot about our searches. The one thing that I hear people are concerned about, how, how long someone will stay. But the thing that we also have to factor in when we're making our decision is those are personal decisions. And we've had people who have made a commitment, and then after a year have had to go. So what we do is we try to find the person that's going to be best, best fit and best served for our district. But we cannot anticipate changes that, in people's lives, that may make them want to come. There are people who would be great for this district, who are actually from this area, who are living a distance, but their personal lives don't allow them to come here. So whether you think the Bay Area is a draw or not, I don't think that's really as much of, I don't really think that's as much of a part of it. The district is a great district. It, we have so much potential, we have so many things going for us. So I'm hoping that the person who could really take us and now move us to the next level will be available. But again, that's something we don't know. But I have confidence in the firms that we, that we heard today. I'm hearing things that I didn't hear in the first one ten years ago, that really impressed me. And I really believe that we have a possibility here. And again, I was very, very comfortable with the first group. The questions, the thoughtfulness, and the, what they anticipated might be the challenges were some of the things that I was thinking myself. So, thank you.
By the first group, Trustee Handy?
Community College Search Services.
More comments from the board?
Having, we'll call the question, having had comments from the board regarding the deliberation on the search firm to be selected this evening for the Peralta Community College District Chancellor. So we will need a motion then to take a vote, and a motion with... We have a motion to accept the proposal from Community College Search Services. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous vote to accept the proposal from Community College Search Services. I had said earlier that we were, our meeting was from four to five-thirty, but it's actually six that the meeting goes to. So we have twenty more minutes on our agendas calendar. I would suggest then, counsel, if you could inform the candidates of the board's vote and ask the candidate that was selected to come back in and stay for a moment, if there are any comments or any discussions that the board would like to have then.
The board wishes to congratulate Community College Search Services on being selected as the search firm to conduct our chancellor search. Just so you know, the doors are locked.
Questions from the board to the search firm? Trustee Gonzalez-Yuan?
Yeah, you know, as you understand, there's been some, some concern in the district about the tight timeline, about whether we're off-schedule, et cetera, et cetera. I think there's been some discussion about this. And I guess I'd love to hear your initial thoughts about how to try to pull together the search committee as a team that allays some of that inevitable tension that's just, I mean, you know, we're embarked on a, on a challenging process.
Yes.
And the best of circumstances, finding a new chancellor can be a challenge. And just, I'd love to hear your thoughts about how to pull that team together and really make the best of it.
Well, we'll both respond, if that's okay. So I, it is a tight timeline, but it is doable. But I think a lot is, a lot of that move and movement around that timeline is going to relate to how soon, I'm looking at Trudy over there, how soon we can pull together the selection committee and get, get them trained and started and, and moving. And also, immediately setting dates to work with the board in terms of getting your input in terms of what you're looking for, the specific skills and qualities or qualifications that you're interested in as well. But once that search committee is, is up, is selected and up and ready to go, that time, the squishiness in that timeline, in my experience, tends to disappear. What often holds up the process is, is getting everything, the committee in particular, up and going.
I would agree with that. I think that the formation of the committee, which obviously every district is different in terms of the policies that drive that. And so it's a matter of if that's delegated to HR or president, you know, the chancellor, or however you delegate that in terms of the specifics of getting the proper representations, getting the different groups to move quickly, that's going to be very much a district issue. We will support and do everything we can to facilitate that. Also, another thing that really slows things down at the beginning is the development of the announcement. And I've gone over your announcement quite, quite a bit. I think it's a good one, basically. I mean, you may have new things in terms of what you're looking for this time compared to two thousand and twelve, I think it was. We can share with you the information from the Aspen Institute. I went through and kind of looked at your primary qualities you were looking for and matched it with the ten, the Aspen Institute has the ten top-level criteria or qualities in, to have an effective leader, a president or chancellor. And I saw a direct relationship to five of the Aspen Institute points.
That's in the previous...
In the previous, in the previous, and there's, there's some of the Aspen Institute information embedded in some of the other ones. But we will, we might want to talk a little bit about a couple of them that weren't addressed, whether that might be now a priority. One is communication, for example, communication skills, effective communicator. And I don't know if that would be a big thing. So we're just going to need to really push real hard to get that up. Many districts now are not doing a printed announcement. It's all online. They post it on their website, and that seems to work. I just did San Jose City College at the president there, and they did everything online. You know, all applications which you already have are online. So that can save time, not having to go to print, and saves money. So I think the brochure, getting the announcement ready, and then working real hard on getting the, you know, faculty and the classified staff and the students and the community people moving right away on identifying who's going to be on that search committee is critical. Yeah.
Trustee Riley?
Yeah, yes, Madam Chair, thank you for your comments. You know, we're pretty clear on our timeline, on how we want this to run. We want it to stay to the timeline. And we've looked at some, some of the issues you've raised, and it seemed like things in order. Now, you raised the issue about online for application. I hadn't thought about that. But I think that, and you guys are experts in this area, but I think that everything else is pretty much in, in order. And those things that we need to put together for us, the committees and stuff, we need to work together like, like right now, to get that moving.
Right now, exactly.
That's right. Right after this meeting, somebody should be assigned.
Right.
Yeah, and so, so that we can...
Trudy? Thank you. If I may, thank you. And I agree, because that's the most critical part in the part of appointing committees to the search can delay the process. But we've already started one with the board's nominations for the community representatives to be on that. And I have a matrix for the board at this point. I won't hand it out now, but I'll share with the board tomorrow regarding where we stand with the nominations for that. And I thank the board members for doing that. The timeline states that February 5th, we will, HR will be sending out a request for appointments to the committee pursuant to our board policy. But HR, tomorrow's the 4th, so HR will be sending out those notices tomorrow to give an extra day. And then we're asking for all confirmations by the 16th. So at the February 17th meeting, the board can actually appoint this election committee.
I think another scheduling issue in this initial phase is for us to have an opportunity to spend more time with you. And how that gets set up with regard to Brown Act and all that, and how many meetings we'd have to have, because of being able to get your input as board members on a more face-to-face basis, consultation basis, on what you're really looking for, that's important for us to know, obviously. But it's also going to help shape up the final language in the announcement that goes out for the position. So that, that again, is a kind of a logistics issue, is very important for us to get set up very quickly.
Well, that can be done, I mean, through, through our administrative staff.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm, right.
Yeah, and probably do it before.
And then I recall, yeah, I'm sorry.
But, I mean, see, something like that could start tomorrow.
Mm-hmm, yeah, absolutely.
So we're, so we're, yeah. But so you're going to meet with us individually, not as a group, right?
Well, we've done it...
We've done it both ways.
We've met, go ahead.
But given the timeline, we have to consider what meeting with you individually, you know, what that's going to look like and how that would take shape. We can give some advice on that?
We have a very passionate and, and strong-willed and intelligent group here, working with a lot of bright minds. We have at least two more meetings in February, the 17th and the 24th. We have a retreat.
We could use those. The retreat would be good.
We, what we'll do is talk with our general counsel and Vice Chancellor Largent and the chancellor regarding, regarding having some time as part of those planned activities.
That would be great.
That would be great.
The retreat is planned for the 24th. I see nodding. So that's a scheduling thing we'll have to...
Maybe just elongate the day.
Trudy, I, I...
If I may, Madam Chair, I think that might be an option. I think the retreat could be one of our options. Other options could be individually or could meet with groups.
Yes. Trudy, would you like to give your recommendation?
Yes, and I, and I have to go back to the timeline, because there is a, on February 11th, there's the public forum for input, and so that might be a good opportunity to have the input for...
The 11th is the boards in Washington DC doing the advocacy trips to, with our legislative representatives and Department of Labor.
Right, but what I was suggesting is that, following with the, you know, online email communication that the board, they have the, the profile that was used in two thousand and twelve, that if they have some feedback to update that profile, that they can give that to me and the consultant, so we can begin forming that in there. And then when we have the February 11th public forum, and then we can fold that information and then go full circle back with the board to then give the board another draft after the public forum comments and input, and then, so we can move on. I'm afraid that if we wait until the 23rd or the 24th to even develop the profile and finalizing it, that that would impact the timeline.
It's going to slow it down. That will, if you wait that, that long, that will slow it down.
Trustee, let's make sure that we stay in, in order. We have a comment from Trustee Galasa, and I think we have a clarification that we were, we're not suggesting that we wait until the 23rd or the 24th to develop that profile.
I wanted to comment on that, the public forum. It's extremely important that we give the faculty and staff here an opportunity to really discuss what they're looking for. You mentioned that our brochure looked pretty good. It's a consequence of having had, I was a part of the committee at that time, and we went and engaged people and really tried to get detailed suggestions on what they were looking for, to shape it up less than a generic and much more specific type focus. So that public forum, I'm just wondering how we can do all of that in such a short period of time, because we held several forums in the past. But that being aside, one of the previous teams proposed doing a survey or something or other. And I'm just wondering if we do some outreach or somehow or other to make sure that people who want to comment but can't be at the forum have an opportunity via something like a survey or some other kind of instrument. It might be very useful.
Electronic survey is very appropriate in this process to be used to garner information and to gather input from a variety of groups. So that would expedite, if you will, the opportunity for, you know, for people who can't show up to one specific event to have their time to say what they're looking for as well.
That might be something we could work with, Trudy, but also with your public information officer, on how to structure that and how to communicate that to the community, that that's another way to provide us input. And I've had some... And I've had some, some experience with, with doing that in another project that I was working on a few years back.
So we can accommodate that?
Yeah, we can do that. I think the idea of more than one forum would be extremely challenging. It would have a, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. The supplement, yeah.
The survey.
Got it, got it.
So it appears as though we've discussed a outreach tool that will include online survey and delivery of comments and, and suggestions and feedback as well as the public forum.
That's correct.
Right.
Trustee Riley.
Yes, thank you. But I just want to share again that with the board, you know, we don't have to wait till the retreat. You know, we can meet individually, as groups, and maybe we do some summary at the retreats. But I don't want us to make the retreat because we, because we already have several items on the agenda that's going to take up some time. So I don't want that to be like, okay, now we're stuck with trying to do this also.
We understand. I live in Marin County. I, I live 30, 35 minutes away. I'm available, working with your, at your staff and, and maybe Trudy, I'm not sure who else might be assisting in setting up those individual meetings. But I am available to meet individually or with small groups, however you like to do it.
The, well, on a recent search that I, that I was involved in, we, we had in these individual, they weren't with single individual, but we basically met with two or three board members at a time. And, you know, had that, that as a way of staying within the Brown Act and all that. And so that's just another approach that we might do as well.
Who would, I'm sorry, who would be, I'm sorry, who would be the individual setting those meetings up?
Uh, we would, I think that we would have the, the staff set up those meetings. And I think that there would need to be concurrence with Vice Chancellor Largent.
Okay.
And I, I would also suggest that the board chair and vice chair be copied on the communication as long as it's not an invitation that, where we would be two of a quorum of trustees so that it wouldn't be a Brown Act violation.
We have to avoid that.
Uh, trustee Galasa had a comment.
Our board, that we just add an hour or two to the agenda for this specific topic. That's an, I'm not making a proposal, it's just a suggestion.
I, I think trustee Galasa's comment is well taken because we were, in, in addition to working with our timeline so that we don't undermine any of the effort that's gone in to the process, that we might be able to supplement by adding additional time for a discussion and to help the process along.
I think that's very important. The more investment that's put up front in terms of the collective thinking and desires around this and this position, the better. And the easier it will be for us and our recruiting, you know, activities to have all of this pretty much resolved and settled before the announcement comes out. So I think more time is okay if that's, if that's the will of the board. But definitely, we don't have to wait until then before we get started. Obviously, we can get started right away.
We have trustee Gonzalez, you in, and then we have Vice Chancellor Largent.
Just, just a clarifying question. So we've played around with that retreat date so many times. I, I've got it double scheduled on my calendar and I'm trying to figure out, is the board retreat the 17th or the 24th?
Twenty-third.
It's the 24th. And from what time to what time?
Do you have that information on the?
Is that from four o'clock? The board retreat?
It's from 10 to 12.
The board retreat is on the 24th.
The, I have the board retreat on the 24th as a regular board meeting from 4:00 PM to 9:00 PM.
From 4:00 to 9:00 PM on the 24th. Okay, so we don't have a meeting at 3:00 on the 17th.
We also have a board meeting on the 17th.
Starting at what time?
The board meeting on the 17th starts.
Standard, okay. Because at one point, we had scheduled a 3:00 thing on the 17th, which I'm about to delete, delete off of my calendar. So we just have a regular board meeting next week.
And, and what?
On the 17th, sorry. And then we have a board retreat on the 24th, which means that the, the board retreat is not going to be a good time to do this because that's too late. Correct? Is that what I'm hearing now?
Hold on, sir. We talk when recognized. So what we have is Nikki's asking a question and I think we would want to have Vice Chancellor Largent respond to Nikki's question. And then we want to hear from the.
Well, and our consultants as well.
And then we want to hear from our consultants. So Vice Chancellor Largent and then our consultants.
Thank you. And I would agree with the comments of the consultants that the 24th, which is the retreat, is too late to start the process. So we'll be starting the process tomorrow as far as the notifications and looking at the profile. But I think for the 24th, that should be, and we're going to go with that and, and have all the board members at that meeting, that that should be the date where the final, after the input, one-on-one, two-on-three conversations with the board members and the consultant.
Electronic surveys.
All that's done and then that is the date where we have the final.
That's right.
Profile. And so the next day, because we're off now just one day because the timeline says we do the advertisement on the 3rd. But if we use the 24th to review, the last final review and approval, okay, for the profile, then we can advertise it the next day. So we're just one day off, the timeline.
A comment from our consultants, then trustee Handy.
Okay, so I'm in concurrence with that. Again, I think it's very important to get started right away on the input, the electronic surveys, the two on, one-on-one, two-on-one with the individual board members. Get all that information together now. And between now and the time you have your retreat, that information will be assembled and organized in a fashion that you can review and say, okay, yes, this makes sense in terms of what we, as a district, can go out with or what we're happy seeing in terms of skills and qualifications and what people are looking for. That, in other words, the board retreat on February 24th would be the last best effort to finalize the announcement. Think of it that way.
Madam President.
Thank you. Trustee Handy and then trustee Gonzalez. And I might point out that we are at 6:01, so we're going to have trustee Handy and then trustee Gonzalez and then we're going to wrap up.
Okay, thank you for clarifying that because I think that there, that there was a little confusion. We weren't saying that the process starts on the 24th. We were saying that it ends on the 24th.
That's correct.
Right. And I'll make a suggestion for those of you who are not away next week, if you could try to get that time in. I know that some of us won't, won't be able to do it until the week after that.
That's okay.
So that we can stay on schedule and you will have an opportunity to meet with everyone.
Sure.
Before then. Then I think that, that on that 24th, that's the day we finalize and we're, we're ready to go.
Thank you, trustee Gonzalez, for clarifying the calendar and please let us know your comment.
An extension of this meeting by five minutes.
So moved and, and by default.
I, I just don't want to be out of compliance here. So I like that clarification. I would like to make two additional suggestions. One is that we have our board clerk actually facilitate the discussions with our, with our consultant. I think she's sort of the best kind of equipped to do that. And then secondly, I'd like us to actually consider adding an hour onto our board retreat. We've hired a consultant to be doing a board retreat and, and if we take time out of that, we're kind of messing with her schedule. Now, we could do that, but I think it's kind of unfair to her. I would like to just suggest, and my time is as tight as everybody else's, so I'm not happy about it, but this is where we are. I'd like to suggest we actually move our board retreat to start at 3:00 or go to 10:00. And again, I'm not happy about it, I'm just looking at the reality of it. So I can live either way, but it's just a thought.
Thank you, trustee Gonzalez. And those are important details for coordinating and organizing. And so the first point was the coordination of the discussions with the consultant. And we want to make sure we keep trust, Vice Chancellor Largent in the loop, that that coordination would go through our, our board clerk. The second issue was the retreat starting at 3:00 instead of 4:00. And I think that that is an important issue. And it's not necessarily a board vote action item, but unless anybody has got any strong opposition or can't be there. If so, please voice it now, otherwise we will, Madam Clerk, if you could circulate that board meeting, that retreat's starting at 3:00, so we have an extra hour. And then I think we have one more comment from trustee Riley and then we're going to adjourn. We have one minute.
Yeah, thank you. I just want to make sure to follow up with trustee Ewan, that, that Vice Chancellor Largent and, and Assistant Chancellor Martinez, that, that they work together on this. That's what you were saying? Okay, I just wanted, I didn't, I don't, okay, because, because it's coming out of Largent's office.
All right, well, if I move to call the question regarding the, we are not even, we don't have a move, we just, the, the, our meeting is adjourned at 6:04.
All right. Brenda, I knew you were going to end up doing it anyway. Might as well just make it official.